Hey, I guess it's 7:02, so we can start this meeting, start the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors of East Norton Township for July 28, 2020. We'll start with roll call and we'll do the normal roll call the way we would do it as we were in the meeting room, starting with the chief. Hopefully, the chief, so on.
Brandon Pasquale, Chief of Police.
Jim Sullivan, Director of Engineering Services.
Dave Chris, Director of Finance.
Jeff Winterbottom, Assistant Manager.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Supervisor Dennis DeSanto.
Mr. Chairman, the Capoletti.
Supervisor Ashley DePiero.
Supervisor Joe Givanas.
And Chairman Kevin McDevitt. Okay, I want to announce that we met in an executive session to go over litigation, possible litigation and personnel issues. The first item on the agenda I'd like to bring up is the approval of the minutes for June 23, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero. I didn't ask this, does anybody have any questions or concerns on the minutes from last month? Okay, none being, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the financial reports for March, April, and May, and June of 2020. Has everybody had a chance to review the financial reports? And are there any concerns or questions on the reports? No? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the financial reports for March, April, and May, and June of 2020.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you Supervisor Givanas, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item is the financial report, no, I'm sorry, the township reports for the second quarter of 2020, April and June. Has everybody had a chance to review the township reports and are there any questions or concerns with those reports? Okay, none being, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the reports.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you Chairwoman Capoletti, do I have a second?
A second.
Who was that Supervisor DeSanto?
Yep.
Okay, seconded by Supervisor DeSanto, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. I don't think I missed anything, so next one is citizens to be heard. Dave, do we have any citizens to be heard?
Yeah, we do. Give me one second.
Okay, no problem.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have one email that came in. It's from Nick Marinelli. The email reads as follows. Hello, I have a question about new business item L, authorization for the position of Deputy Police Chief. What's the justification for the new position? Will there be a new hire or a promotion? And if they're a new hire, is this because crime has risen?
I guess Chief Pasquale, could you handle that one?
Well, Mr.--
Okay, sorry.
That's going to be, not trying to not do it now, but I know that's an item that he's going to say everything, he's going to answer that during the meeting, so maybe we could just wait till then rather than--
If we can do that, that's fine. That works. Okay. Mr. Chris, are there any other questions?
I've just checked, that was the only one received at this point.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the board? You have any comments?
Um, I'll jump in, and I just, I think I've said this every meeting since the pandemic started, but I want to thank everybody for their patience and for really going hard to do everything they can to try and stem the pandemic and do what they can to help stop the virus. We're seeing cases increase again, so please continue to social distance and wear your mask and wash your hands. It's really all we have right now to try and stop this and get to a place where we can hopefully be able to open things back up in the future is by really shutting down and washing our hands and wearing masks and, you know, really limiting our social contact with people. So, thank you as you continue to do it and really, you know, working with all of us to make sure that we can get through this together.
Thank you Chairwoman Capoletti. Any other comments? Okay, none being, we have no old business this month, so we'll start out with new business. And the first thing on the agenda for new business is the award of the sale of a 2013 Ford Explorer SUV through Minnesota Bid. I would like to call on Chief Pasquale to review this item.
At the last meeting, I recommended the Board of Supervisors, which identified to the police department as car seven, to be placed on sale from Minnesota Bid as is. The vehicle has 132,000 miles, needs a transmission, seatbelt replacement, tires, and inspection, and other maintenance issues. The vehicle has exceeded its usefulness for us, it's a 2008. The recommendation, or three recommendations was put on Minnesota, and we received the closing bid on July 22 for the high amount of $4,401 to Evan Kennedy out of Audubon.
Okay.
So I'm requesting authorization for the sale of that vehicle to Mr. Kenny.
All right, is there any questions for the chief? Okay, none being, the only, I have a comment, and Chief, I'd like to congratulate you on extending the miles on the cars. At one time, we used to only put 75,000 on the cars and then-- And now, you're so much more, I mean, it's just extended a few more years. So that's great work on your part. So I'd like to make a motion to award the sale of the 2013 Ford Explorer SUV through Minnesota Bid. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, next item is to the assessment appeal for the stipulation of the Norton Holdings. So I'd like to call on our solicitor to go over this and explain what's going on there.
Thank you. So this matter involves a reverse assessment appeal filed by the Norristown Area School District involving six parcels that were consolidated into one, all located in this northern township. And the stipulation would involve action by the Board of Supervisors, and this is a proposed stipulation that has been reviewed by both the school district, the taxpayer, the county, as well as our office. And the properties, by way of background, sold for more than their equivalent combined assessed value. When that occurred, Norristown Area School District filed an appeal to the Board of Assessments. This is called a reverse appeal. Unfortunately, the Board of Assessments did not change the assessed value. When that occurred, Norristown Area School District filed an appeal in the Court of Common Pleas. The district and the taxpayer have agreed to a settlement that splits the difference to an extent. It's our office has reviewed it and would urge the Board of Supervisors to sign on to this. It would avoid unnecessary litigation expenses and would result in a combined underpayment in the amount of $1,674. So the assessment would lead to additional tax revenue going forward. So that is where this matter stands, and again, it would be up for the board's consideration tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our solicitor? Okay, none being, I'd like to make a motion to approve the assessment appeal stipulation for Norton Holding. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next one is for Carroll Engineering Corporation Proposal for Burnside Avenue Pumping Station, WQM Permit Application. I'd like to call on our engineer, Jim Sullivan, to review this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a proposal from Carroll Engineering. As part of the sale of our assets to Aqua, we had to provide a copy of all of our pump station permits, called a water quality management permit, and we had everyone except for Burnside Avenue Pump Station. So it's our job to get, secure that permit from DEP. We have, like I said, we have a proposal from Carroll Engineering for a cost not to exceed $6,650 to get that permit. Fortunately, we found all the design drawings for that, so it's a lot cheaper than it could have been.
Okay, great. Questions for our engineer? None being, I'd like to make a motion to consider the Carroll Engineering Corporation Proposal for Burnside Avenue Pumping Station, WQM Permit Application. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor Givanas, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the accept the tax collector, Kate Gillan's resignation. I would like to call on Township Manager Robert Hart.
Thank you Chairman McDevitt. Before you tonight is a document accepting the resignation of the elected tax collector, Kate Gillan. Ms. Gillan's resignation was effective on July 18. Prior to that, knowing she was going to resign, Ms. Gillan defected the township to collect the taxes. As you're aware, the tax collector is independently elected position, that is not really connected to the township in any way. But knowing she was moving out, the family is moving out of the township, she offered her resignation. We, for the public's purpose, as of July 17, the taxes for township and county taxes are paid at the township building. So going forward would make things a lot smoother and a lot more cohesive. But for tonight, it's just that the Board of Supervisors by ordinance has to, or by, has to accept the resignation. And you will, coming weeks, you will have to appoint a placement tax collector to fulfill the-- And that office will be on the November ballot.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions for the manager? Okay, none being, I'd like to make a motion to accept the tax collector, Kate Gillan's resignation. Do I have--
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2808, authorizing the application for the DECED Multi-Model Transportation Fund for the East Norton ADA Curve Ramp Project. I'd like to call again on the engineer, Jim Sullivan.
Thank you. This resolution and the one next are about an ADA sidewalk program that we want to try to get grants for in the township. There's 17 intersections across the street from Heroes Park, that neighborhood, and then four other intersections near the middle school, and we're looking to install ADA ramps where there aren't any. This resolution allows us to apply for those grants. The total construction cost for everything is $434,437. The DECED grant has no match, so that's very good news. So since that's the one we're talking about right now, that's where I'll leave it.
Okay, any questions for our engineer?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the amount that we're requesting through the grant, would that amount cover all of the intersections that we're talking about, or do we--
Yes, it would. It would cover all the intersections that we're talking about.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for our engineer? All right, none being, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2808, authorizing the application for the DECED Multi-Model Transportation Fund for the East Norton ADA Curve Ramp Project. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you Chairwoman Capoletti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2809, authorizing the application for the County Transportation Program for East Norton Township ADA Curve Ramp Project. Again, I'd like to call on our engineer, Jim Sullivan.
Thank you. This resolution is for a grant for the same project, but from a different funding source. This funding source does come with a match, 20% of the first $250,000 and 50% of anything thereafter. If we get half from each one, we'll be looking pretty good. So we'd like to also apply for this grant. It's a County Transportation Program grant, which we've got a few of those in the past.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our engineer? Okay, none being, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2809, authorizing the application for the County Transportation Program for the East Norton ADA Curve Ramp Project. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item, wow, it's a lot of items here tonight. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2810, granting the extension of the preliminary and final subdivision and land development approval relative to the application for the development of Tone 2000, Paul Pantone, for the development of the parcel of land located at 2935 Whitehall Road. Again, I'd like to call on our engineer, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This land of all was approved in 2006 and received a five-year extension every time since then. There've been about four extensions, I think. They're looking for another extension. It's a project that involves an aid lot subdivision with a small cul-de-sac. There is one existing house and seven new lots. I think at this point, they're looking for a 30-month extension as opposed to another five years. And Mr. Hart was going to chime in on this to tell you all the background.
Yeah, thanks, Sullivan. As you know, this property has had several interested developers in the past. The Board of Supervisors in the past denied one particular application because the proposed development was inconsistent with the character and nature of the neighborhood. We've expressed that, the desire of the township to not, that we will not revisit those types of inappropriate or inconsistent development ideas. We've expressed that to the property, the property owner is intent on selling his approved as-is. So he did request a five-year extension. We didn't feel that was appropriate at this point, so we cut it in half. We gave him a third extension, proposed extension, and agrees with the guidance provided to him by the township.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hart.
I just want to add one thing, you're also going to need an extension of their zoning hearing relief, so that'll be on the next zoning hearing board meeting, August 11.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any questions for either the engineer or the manager?
I have a question. In light of what Mr. Sullivan just said, does it matter if we give the approval of 30 months and the zoning hearing board says, no, you don't get the approval of 30 months, then what happens?
The zoning relief is kind of minimal. The swimming pool for the existing house would be in violation of setbacks. So it would be unusual not to grant that extension after the Board of Supervisors has granted an extension of the actual land development approval.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for either the, our engineer or the manager? Okay, none being, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2810, granting an extension of the preliminary and final subdivision and land development approval related to the application for the development of Tone 2000, Paul Pantone, for the development of a parcel of land located at 2935 Whitehall Road for an extension of 30 months. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Supervisor DeSanto, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. It's kind of hard sometimes--
It's okay, Kevin, I forgive you.
Thank you.
The names are so close.
Yes, they are. Usually, you're on either side of me, so I can, you know, one ear's on the, you know, left--
All's good.
Anyhow, let's move on to the next item, which is the radar detection change order. Again, I'd like to call on engineer Jim Sullivan to review this item.
Okay, this is change order number one and should be the last change order for this particular project. During progress of the work, it was determined that one of the controller cabinets had no more room for any kind of controllers. That's located at Swede Road and Hilltop Avenue, and the cost of that cabinet is $4,845. In addition, at the intersection of Arch Road, New Hope Street, Old Arch Road, and I'm going to say this wrong, Railroad, the conduit that they need to pull the wires through to make this intersection have radar detection is completely full of block. So we actually have to put a new conduit in the ground, and the cost of that is $9,400. So the total change order is $13,945.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Is there any questions for our engineer? Okay, none being, I'd like to make a motion to approve the radar detection change order. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor Givanas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this is a big one. Authorizing to advertise for fireworks ordinance. I'd like to call on our manager, Mr. Hart, to review this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight, the conversation to advertise a firework. A couple of years ago, legislature, some laws gave more freedom to the use of fireworks in our municipalities, in all municipalities throughout the state. Specifically this year, you may have known a large increase in complaints due to the, you know, the hundredfold increase in fireworks usage, whether it's through Facebook, where we had dozens and dozens and dozens of complaints, our police chief and our department, numerous complaints about the use of fireworks throughout our neighborhoods. We understood as a township that, you know, we don't want to infringe upon the use of fireworks, but with the legislature sort of loosening things up, we worked with our solicitor's office to put together an ordinance that puts strong enough restrictions that are based on safety and those types of concerns, and some timing, not interrupt neighborhoods at all hours. So our solicitor's office worked very detailed, or very hard, and put a very detailed ordinance together that you have before you that, you know, prohibits where you can put them off. You can't be under the influence. You can't put them off, you know, 50 feet from a house. All these different things for safety reasons. So if people want to use them, we'll be able to use them at the time, in the right place, safely, and not just indiscriminately and causing issues for neighbors throughout the townships. That's what's before you tonight. It's well done, it's competitive, it still allows use, but it puts what we, it puts restrictions in place that are legally defensible and appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions for our manager? There are no questions, I'd like to make a motion to authorize to advertise the fireworks ordinance. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you Supervisor DePiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is Hough Associates Agreement. Again, I'd like to call on Mr. Hart to review this item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hough and Associates works together the data on all our research throughout our township. I'm going to sort of cut it short a little bit tonight. I did speak to you, Mr. Chairman, about this. We discussed looking, really trying to narrow down a better price on this. The township has used Hough and Associates for several years, and as we looked around, we are confident, pretty confident, that we can get a better deal on this service for us. So if you would consider, if the Board would consider tabling this, voting to table, and we could bring it back next month, and I'm confident that we can bring you back an agreement with a significantly more competitive price.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So, yes, I would like to make a motion to table the Hough Associate Agreement. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item is Resolution Number 2811, Designation of Agent for COVID-19. I would like to call on our manager, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This action before you tonight is basically designating, you're voting to designate myself, the manager, the coordinator, to solicit and accept, sign and accept any disaster relief funds due to COVID that may be released by the federal government or the state government for townships and boroughs to recoup any losses or costs associated with the COVID-19 emergency. Really, a formality, we have done this a couple other times before when you're against snowstorms or a large rainfall with, they cause significant damage. We, as you know, most townships and boroughs and cities have really had an increased cost with COVID doing extra fire services, particularly with our township, extra police service, more hours, more patrols from a variety of sources, and this allows us to recoup some of those extra expenses when released by COVID.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions for the manager? Okay, none being, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 2811, Designation of Agent for COVID-19. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you Chairwoman Capoletti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is authorizing to fill the position of Deputy Chief. I'd like to call on the manager, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just, I'll just begin, and Chief Pasquale can take it from there. Before you talk about his authorization to fill a position of deputy chief for East North Department. Chief Basquale can go into more detail, but it's really, we have, it was meant to fill lieutenant initially, which we have not had filled since Chief Basquale was promoted from lieutenant to chief. Chief Basquale, to his credit, did, you know, a really thorough review of the department. Wanted to do that very in-depth and really put a detailed analysis to the whole department, and it prior to recommending we go out for a lieutenant. And during the course of his review and reaching out and seeing the talented people that may be out there with their, you know, with their different skills and different skill sets, has been looking for more of a, not a lieutenant position, more of a deputy chief for a lot of reasons. And he can go into them as more of a, he's going to have certain, whoever the candidate is eventually hired, is going to have very specific, a very specific detailed position and responsibilities. So that's why the deputy position was appropriate for some of the actions he would be responsible for. But Basquale, anything you'd like to add? I ran off at the mouth, so.
That's okay. No, it's pretty good. I mean, it's obviously a difficult decision to look outside the department. It's not one that was taken lightly. It is a management decision based on personal matters and the culture, and where we're looking to take the department in the future. As I opened this and started to look, we had, I think, at least 15 candidates submitted. I looked at them all, and there were some that I had spoken to in depth. And it's what caused me to kind of move in a different direction and look for deputy chief. West Norton has one. Again, it's more of a title, but there are going to be some, again, reasons for that, too, for the difference in the change of the name of the position itself. We are not adding a position. We've been working short, and we've been down a position. So like I said, there's a number of reasons why this works and why this fits for our organization at this time. If anybody has any questions specifically that I can answer, I'd be more than happy to.
And if I can add one last thing, as in the coming weeks, we hope to, we expect to come to you with a, with more information out, you know, specifically a certain candidate. So stay tuned, stay tuned on that. But, you know, policing is, and every department is unique, and policing is an evolving process and an evolving circle. And to the chief's credit, he has, he has really included that mindset in this exploration process. So I think we're going to benefit greatly by it in the years to come.
Chief Basquale, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In the, in the age of social media, there are a lot of questions pop, and one of the questions going to be is, why are we, what is the difference between a lieutenant and an assistant chief or a deputy chief? And why did we go that way?
Specifically for us, and again, if we get into, again, rank structure and the department as a whole, how we're situated, unions, and how that all works into contracts and things like that. Again, this is, this is a more in-depth and broader conversation than probably this meeting has time for. But there's a number of reasons why, like I said, that specifically this works for the organization and for the township as a whole, across the, again, how this fits financially and how all those things actually benefit to the organization and to the township in moving in this direction.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief or Mr. Hart?
I just want to make sure from Mr. Chris that he read Mr. Marinelli's question earlier, and we deferred that, and just to make sure that his questions were answered. Is that, can you review that, Dave?
Sure. Just to read the email. Hello, I have a question about item L, Authorization to Fill the Position of Deputy Police Chief. What's the justification for the new position? Will they be a new hire or promotion? If they're a new hire, is it because crime has risen? Thanks, Marinelli.
So I guess the one, the one question that you didn't answer, has crime risen that much?
That's kind of a trick question, so to speak. And so I think that if you look at our statistics now, I think you're going to find that we do actually have higher statistics. We've had, but that's also to also our hiring that we've done recently. Hired guys who are active and have been proactive, and they're doing a very good job for this police department, for this community, and making arrests and arresting people that need to be arrested. So I think, yes, I think statistically, you actually will probably see an increase in that category as well from us, to be honest with you.
But I guess, I guess the other part of that question would be, is this position being hired because of a higher rate in crime?
No, it's not being hired for that. It's being hired because it's realistically, honestly, it's a necessity. I'm doing two people's jobs and a job that realistically that I shouldn't be doing all the time. So that's why there's actually a need, a necessity there.
And I guess I'd just like to add that you have been doing the two jobs for almost two years now, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
So, great job. Any other questions? Okay, non-being, I'd like to make a motion to authorize to fill the position of deputy police chief. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Supervisor DePiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item is waiver of conflict of interest in connection with representative, representation of the ENPW Joint Sewer Authority as financial counsel. I'd like to call on Mr. Hart to review this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, East North Township along with Plymouth Township are all joint of, basically, the Joint Sewer Treatment Center where our, where our sewage goes. Part of that is each township has three members on the authority board. So we appoint three members through the authority board for a total of nine members. Recently, we went out to bid, we, for proposals for bond council. We've had on the JS, part of the JSA for many years. We've also, this same year, we've also went out, new proposals for your regular solicitor position and sewer engineer for the JS. This in particular, this last week, I think it was like...
It was last Wednesday.
Yeah, the JSA were to interview some potential bond councils, council. Two firms applied and were interviewed. They both are very fine firms and with much experience and much expertise in the, in this field, specifically sewer authorities. After the interview, as far as the presentation and quite frankly, the price, the joint authority chose the firm of Obermeyer in the... Obermeyer, before you deny, it's a bit of a conflict of interest in, because Obermeyer serves as our labor council. They're a large centricity firm. They have a practice group, labor law. They handle the role of county township plus Plymouth Township. Plymouth Township has waived this conflict as it is not, from our offices, to it, and there's no real conflict. They're two different areas of law, and this is, it's not an issue where we're adversarial in any way. So before you tonight is a, something that's very common in these types of situations, is a waiver of conflict. Basically, you know, not in, you're endorsing this appointment with... So that's what's before you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions for the manager? Okay, non-being, I'd like to approve the waiver of conflict of interest in connection with the representation of the ENPW Joint Sewer Authority as financial counsel. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Supervisor DeSanto. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda, and it's probably very timely, is the approval of the contract for the replacement of the AC unit. I'd like to call on our engineer, Jim Sullivan.
Thank you, again, Mr. Chairman. The AC unit in the police area is on way beyond its service life. It's leaking every time there's, it goes on, the condensate leaks somewhere. There's been a lot of water downstairs in the police department. So we've gone ahead and contracted with Aaron Mechanical to replace the unit, and it costs not to exceed $11,100. We do have an invoice for $11,008, but, you know, we like keep it around numbers.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for our engineer?
I missed the last part. What did he say, I like to keep it under what?
It's round numbers, $11,100 is a round number. The actual cost, $11,083, so.
Okay. Other questions for our engineer or our manager about the item? Okay, non-being, I'd like to make a motion to approve the replacement of our air conditioning for the township building. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chairwoman Capaletti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the schedule for meetings and other activities. So on Tuesday, August 11th, we're having our zoning hearing board. On Wednesday, August 12th, is the Joint Sewer Authority meeting. Okay, on Tuesday, August 18th, we're having a concert in the park, the sensational Soul Cruisers. And we're also having, let's see what else. It says Bike with a Cop. I'm not really sure what that is.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Did you wear a helmet?
Yeah.
Helmet's optional.
Absolutely.
You have to wear helmets, too.
Okay, where's that going to be?
Okay.
They're usually held in the township park.
This is all.
It's going to be at the township, okay.
All right.
All right, and that is at 4:00?
I'm not sure exactly.
Yeah, that's what it says here, 4:00.
It says 4:00?
Yeah.
Where are you guys meeting at?
It's August 18th, right?
Where are you meeting at?
Meet at 4:00. Right.
At the park.
At where?
The park.
Stamford Street Park.
Yes.
And we will have that, stay tuned.
Okay. Yeah, I guess it's a little confusing because we have the, the...
Like the playground?
Parks and Rec built.
Okay.
We have the concert in the park at 7:00, and then we have the bike at, at 4:00.
Now, the concert in the park is on the 12th.
I'm sorry. Okay. We need lines on these things because they flow together. Sorry about that. It's, it's the 12th. Looks like it comes down to the other. So then also on the 18th is the planning commission, and that is at 7:00. And then Tuesday, the 25th, is the executive session and the board of supervisors at 7:00. So that's all I have for that. So let me just go back to my agenda here. Do I have any more, Mr. Hart, or Mr. Chris, do I have any more citizens to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, I'm reviewing the info at email address, and I do not see any additional emails having been received.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other business that anybody wants to bring up?
The movie at the park with Frozen 2 was pretty fun. So thank you to Parks and Rec, Bob, and all the police officers there. Thank you so much. That was really fun. It's nice to see the community come together after being in like, the red zone for so long. Nice to see actual humans and be part of a fun event. So thank you.
Is there any other business or any other comments from the board? Okay, then the next thing is the manager's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make this quick. Just that, I know Supervisor DePiero talked about the movie in the park. As you can imagine, in this COVID time, it's, it's been a challenge to make things and programs and different available for the public. But our Parks and Rec department has done a fantastic job. They're constantly thinking of new ideas and different strategies of outreach just to make, make us feel a little more normal in a very abnormal world. So we're going to continue to do that. They're very excited about a few plans we have this fall. Let's hope we make some more progress on the COVID front. We can get back to doing the things that we do best. But stay tuned for some, for fun things this fall, and stay healthy, everyone.
Thank you. All right, is there any questions for the manager? Okay, no questions? There are no more comments or concerns, or I'd like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll put the second that motion.
Okay, that was Ashley DePiero, sorry.
No, that was Amanda.
Well, I'm reading, I'm reading who's up on the Zoom. So, yeah, Supervisor DePiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. See you next month, if hopefully in person we can start doing this. Goodbye.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, good night.
Bye.